Anyone not? Motion carries. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the meeting held January 17th, 2023?
Yes.
Yes.
Does someone want to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Could I have a second, please?
A second.
Everyone in favor of approving the approving the minutes from the meeting held January 17th, 2023?
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? Motion carries. So we have a public comment period. Do we have any public comments? From anyone?
We have not received any.
No, just observing.
Oh, perfect. And then we need to review some minor subdivision and final subdivision plots approved since the January 17th, 2023. Ms. Starb, tonight's show will be Allison, I think.
Okay, I just have two for you this evening. The first is a minor subdivision plat that was done over on Bryant Drive. It was three parcels that they consolidated down into two. There was a small parcel right here that they combined with this parcel, and then they separated it off this one right here. So it's two tax map numbers now, rather than two with the parcel split across the road, and then another one right here. So that's the first one. Are there any questions or comments about this one?
To what end?
I believe the person that owns the lots thought it would be easier to sell them that way. These lots are ones that front on Lewdewitt, right on the corner by Lowe's, right there. And then the next one is a final subdivision plat for Ivy Commons Phase 1B. Ivy Commons, of course, is located on off of Ivy. And this one is, this was Phase 1A down here, which is just immediately north of, I'm blanking on the name, Claybrook.
Claybrook.
Claybrook, excuse me. Just north of Claybrook subdivision. This was Phase 1, and so Phase B is just north of that, right there. And this is just a close-up of the of lots right there in the Phase 1B. And that's all I have for you for this one.
How many homes are in 1B?
Let's see. I should know that off the top of my head. It's like, what, about 30?
Yeah.
About 30 or so.
Have they broken ground on that yet?
I believe they've started the infrastructure for it. I don't think any houses have gone up yet in 1B.
So, yeah.
Yeah. There are houses going up in Phase 1A, but not 1B yet.
Great. And that's all single-family?
Yes.
Good. Now we have matters from staff.
I have one quick thing. So at your meeting in October of last year, commissioners recommended that city council possibly look into reinstalling stop signs on Vedette Avenue. And there was some mention of speed bumps or any kind of other traffic calming measures that would be deemed appropriate. So since that time, staff's been kind of going back and gathering the history of, you know, what happened at that location and why the stop signs were changed. So I wanted to provide you that information. So in 2010, McCormick Taylor, as engineering consultants for the city, did complete a traffic calming study, and it was of the Forest Bader neighborhood. And so that neighborhood is generally bound by Rossar, West Main, and Brookdale. And the study was initiated because citizens were complaining regarding speeding and cut-through problems throughout the neighborhood. Kind of an important focus of that study was clarifying the difference between a two-way stop control, so that's where stop signs are placed on the minor streets, or an all-way stop control where stop signs would be placed on all four approaches. And so kind of general good engineering practice is that all-way stop controls would be used if the two roads have roughly equal volumes and both roads achieve a certain volume threshold. And so based on that 2010 study, most of those intersections did not meet those warrants. So because of that, the study noted that the stop signs were really counterintuitive because they were placed on the major street, but not on the minor streets. And then throughout different field observations, it was noted that drivers were really just kind of ignoring the stop signs because of how counterintuitive it was. And so the study recommended placing them on the minor streets rather than the major. So I kind of wanted to just provide an update that there had been that traffic calming study done in 2010. There currently isn't any, you know, kind of budgeted line item where for us to pursue another traffic calming study, not that there couldn't be in the future. You know, likely, you know, police enforcement would be important for the speeding issue. And then the city does regularly collect volume and speed data, and tubes can be placed at different locations if that's something that Planning Commission would be interested in and getting counts specifically at that area in a more updated timeframe. But there are regular counts that are done that we can kind of monitor and track volumes and speed. But that is the history of why the stop signs were switched and why, you know, it wouldn't be good engineering practice to kind of just go back to putting them on that kind of major thoroughfare that has the higher volumes.
Who's doing the regular data collection at the moment?
Public Works does that.
Oh, Public Works.
Yeah, they do the data collection and then they provide it. So we do have volumes and speed data. We can, you know, they do them in a certain schedule, but we could always ask them if it's of interest to go out and put some tubes there at that location for, you know, a quicker or more updated count. But they are regularly collecting that information on all streets.
What is their frequency, once a quarter?
I know that the last batch of data I received, it looks like it was like an every-three-year kind of capture. So that's the update on that. I just wanted to kind of, that's kind of where staff plans to leave it unless there is a desire by the Planning Commission to do anything differently.
I guess, cost analysis-wise, would it, I'm trying to think about, would it be more worth it to have policing that would, expenditure-wise, like how much would it cost to have a policeman sitting in that one spot versus getting a small speed hump of some sort? Because just from the research I've done over the last few years, physics always slows people down better than signage, just the way it is. So if we were able to get a speed hump there, obviously that'd be the best option out of stop signs, speed hump policing. But there's always the cost analysis. Like, is it worth the, what, $3,000 to $10,000 to put in a speed hump depending on size, width, and all of those factors? Or would it be more worth it just to have a law enforcement officer there?
Yeah, I think those are all good questions. I will point out that in, you know, from experience with the traffic calming study, you know, the answers that citizens want, you know, might be the additional signage, or like you're saying, you know, the speed hump or something like that. But a lot of times, the recommendations that come out of those studies are, you know, some costly improvements that then we would be looking to budget and have council approve. Or there are sometimes improvements that, you know, maybe aren't as palatable to citizens.
Right.
And they decided, well, wait, we just wanted the sign, we didn't want this. So that is some, another important thing to point out. If anybody wants the 2010 study to like look through what what some of the specific recommendations were, we'd be happy to provide that. Because they did talk about if, you know, speeds were to increase, there may be some additional things that the city might want to look into. So I'd be happy to provide that study. We could email that out to anyone that's interested. It's a pretty quick read. And then if there are any follow-up questions, we could keep working on it.
You could also go with, instead of speed hump, go with the rumble strips. I think the only place in Waynesboro they currently reside right now is on 254, I believe.
Yeah, and I know that, you know, Public Works has heartburn with certain things for snow removal.
Oh, yeah, not the easiest things.
Lots of things to balance. So that would definitely be, you know, kind of working through all departments if there was any idea there.
So I did, I did have a conversation with Assistant City Manager, Mr. Wood, and, you know, speed humps are not something that they want to do in the city. The rumble strips, that's an option, but but not necessarily speed humps because of snow removal.
Yeah, because usually...
The damage to the trucks because of it.
Yeah, and even if you went with the rubble ones that bolted down, would still tear the blade right off the front of a truck.
I'd be interested to know, does somebody keep the crash data from like before the stop signs were gone and after the stop signs were gone? Who would have, who in the city would have, like, police department?
Yeah, VDOT does have crash data posted, and it's usually like a seven-year horizon. I mean, we could obviously ask them for farther back, but yes, they would have information on that.
That would be interesting to see, because, you know, just coming from a, there's only many, so many dollars in the pot. If you look at that data and say, there's no more crashes than there were when there were stop signs the other way.
Yeah.
You know, I think that would be the most empirical sort of...
And it isn't a segment of roadway that has risen to the top on our radar as far as high-crash areas of the city.
Right.
Because that we, you know, we do monitor those and work through, you know, planning grants and things and
Yeah.
and regional bodies and studies for those areas. So that's not a roadway that we're noticing.
Well, that's good to know. That's good to know. That's good to know. That's, I sort of like that sort of, as empirical as you can get data. I mean, at the end of the day, that's kind of...
But yeah, we could pull some of that and, you know, at our next meeting, have a little bit of that information for you, too.
That'd be interesting. It'd be interesting if you don't mind.
Yep.
Well, there is one resident that's had three vehicles hit there.
Oh, wow.
In, in the last, I don't, how many years? Maybe five or six years. One in particular that I know, somebody that lives on Vedette.
Like their parked car has been hit?
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I think I remember someone saying that at...
Cars, yeah, three times. One of the things I'm thinking about, too, don't seem to be, I know the city people don't like it, but I know that there's some neighborhoods in Charlottesville that do have them, and they really do slow traffic down. But they're not the ones that, if you go over them at, you know, five or even 10 miles an hour, they're going to destroy the, you know, underneath your car, you know, damage your car. They just happen to be just enough, and they're sort of around, and they're in the area of just off of, I think it's Monticello. It's kind of that area where there's some restaurants, it's an old neighborhood where a lot of new restaurants are. And it really does slow traffic down. And I think there's a school in that area, too. On the corner of where I live, there's Forest Bader. People run stop signs all the time. The police can't sit there. And really, it doesn't, even on Vedette, do much good to have police there because they can't sit all the time. They tried, like Brian Edwards, before he retired, he sat there, and he caught a couple people. But people just fly through there, kids ride bicycles through there. It's pretty bad. People just, about 40% of the people go through there, don't stop, don't even slow down. Some go 30 to 40 miles an hour. But the study might be more appropriate on Vedette, maybe when that little subdivision gets built. You know, that might give you a better time to study it because you know you're going to get some increased traffic, maybe on Carman, Summer Crest, and then probably along Vedette. So that might be the time to look at it. I mean, it's kind of like after the fact, but I'm not sure what it would really help in that area. But really, speed bumps or not, if you do them right.
If people were better drivers, that would really be the...
Well, that's...
It's not really...
Well, it's yours. People have gotten worse, especially the last few years.
If people were better drivers or obeyed the rules better, I think...
People just don't stop at signs anymore.
People often work all that stuff, like, for humans.
I'd be curious to know how many of those cars that run near stop signs, the people actually live in that neighborhood?
Yeah.
Because where I live, over behind Fairfax Hall, you know, I got a security camera set up, and I mean, it's cars that circle, I'm on a dead-end road that circle all day long, and none of them live in the neighborhood.
Just from my perspective, I'm a dad, so I'm always thinking about what makes the street the safest. Like, I was on bike rides, this has been really nice. I've been going on bike rides with my family. And I'm always thinking, hmm, what could make this space a little bit safer? Because, yeah, someone's coming home from work, and it's a little bit of a downward slope, they're going to be going a little bit faster. But if there's any sort of physical deterrent to be able to slow down, they, oh, wait, there is a speed hump coming up, I'm going to drop from 35 to 25. And then that space just becomes a much safer space for everybody to walk, bike, even drive or park their vehicle. And just to hear one person's gotten their car hit three times in one spot is pretty wild.
They finally got rid of the extra vehicle. They've got two. They get into the driveway, but they used to have to actually park one right on Vedette, pretty much, on the edge. But I do know, I haven't known that person.
If Public Works went back out and put the tubes up, could they collect speed data? Was that part of the data?
I believe they do speed data, too. Yep.
There was, I know there was one there, gosh, it wasn't a couple months ago, there was one there.
Okay.
So they must be relatively current data.
Yeah, I think we probably have 2022 numbers that we could work on kind of tabulating, if that'd be something that you'd, you know, be interested in seeing.
Yeah, I just think some more information would be good.
Okay, yep. We'll keep, keep working on it. Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
I would, I would love to see a slightly slower-moving city. Just data says slower vehicles are safer vehicles. So whatever we can do to see a little bit more, I'm not saying we have to be going everybody below 45. That's, I get it. But just seeing a little bit slower with the city would be really nice, actually.
Yeah, and it's definitely the, you know, one of the reasons why roundabouts are, you know, promoted as extremely safe, because even if you're having accidents within the roundabout, it's at a much slower speed and, you know, a lot less injuries and possible fatalities.
And I'm super excited about the ones that are coming here.
Yep.
I'm not sure, I wanted to ask a question about, since we're talking about speed, and I know we were just talking about Vedette, but, you know, we talked about Rossar Avenue, but looking at that speed limit from 45 to 35, because there's, you know, there's an accident, it must be, it seems like there's one or two a day. I'm probably exaggerating, but it seems like virtually every day. And one of the things I noticed, it's cars that are pulling out from the, either from some of the restaurants and other places seem to be getting hit. I saw, I didn't see the accident, but I saw where a car got knocked over a median there. And, you know, we're trying to get traffic through, but traffic through that area where Chipotle and all those are, it's, the speed limit's 45. I know that you want to move cars through. The trouble is, if they're moving through at 45, some are going faster, when people try to pull out, I think that's probably, it's not as safe, even if you didn't have, weren't having some accidents there. At that speed, that area being congested, probably going to be some more businesses opening, you know, maybe through there. But it'd be nice to slow down just a little bit, because if you're going through there and get hit 50 miles an hour, it's a big difference on 55, because people tend to go five to 10 miles faster than some of the posted limits. I'd see cars going through there at, you know, 35 or 40, whatever. I think it would be safer, because the impact won't be as great. And we talked about that one time. I don't know if someone in this council or VDOT or whoever...
Yes, so with Rossar, I think we would have to involve VDOT, because they have certain...
Is VDOT in charge of the lights out there?
So that corridor does have an approved, funded, smart-scale project that will help with signal timing.
That's the near misses that I see almost every day, is somebody comes tearing through a light, and the next light's red, so the person pulling out a sheet says, oh, the next light's red, let me just pull out. And they pull out and somebody, like you're saying, in front of somebody going 45 or 50.
Yeah, so that is a funded project. I would be probably telling you the incorrect timeline if I tried, so I can get you that information. But it will be coordinating signal timing throughout that area.
That'll be a huge investment.
Yes, yes.
And sometimes it's fast to green, or I call fast to green. It's not, you almost need to have some hesitation. When I go through anything anymore, I've just gotten in the way, before I go out, when my light turns green, I'm looking left and right.
Uh huh.
It's become a habit with me. So if someone blows the horn, because I'm not speeding off like I'm in a race, they're going to have to wait that second because I'm going to look left and right. And some of those are pretty fast. And I think that may be something else that could be looked into as far as the signal lights, traffic lights.
If I remember right, weren't, wasn't there some discussion about closing off some of those cross-sections on Rossar, where all those restaurants are, and changing some of those lights to a flashing yellow? So like, if you were coming out of, it's not the Walmart interest, this is the next one up, you would only go right because there wouldn't be a crossover.
Yes, I do believe, other than the signal timing, there might be a few of those access management. So we can also send you that out, the concept that shows kind of all the changes proposed with that study. Be happy to do that.
That'd be good to know.
That's all I have from staff. Anything else?
Okay, is it appropriate, can I talk about my thing?
Yep.
Okay, so this is a thing that is super-duper. I don't know if you all are aware, but at the school level, high school and middle school, 90% in both the county and the city schools of what they deal with is vaping.
Oh, yes.
It is, it is brutal. It's brutal. There's, I've, trust me, I've been on phone with ABC, I've been on, everyone knows who I am about this issue now because it's really important to me. We had police officers, they just can't be there, and they don't check IDs. And the age is 21, it's not 18, you know? And it's something that's difficult to address because the way we make laws, we can't keep up with the new junk that comes out there. So I looked around, being the problem solver that I am, I looked around to see what other communities did. And at the very, I don't know how much change it will make to our current situation, but in my dream world, if we can think about doing this, it would move, if we could do, if we could figure out a way to write a zoning text amendment that would keep them from 1,000 feet from any school, a radius of 1,000 feet from any school. And if nothing else, it sends us a message, and we move them, you know, a few hundred yards away. But I think we, we need to, we as a community, we as a planning commission, need to be ready to stand firm and protect our kids.
That actually resonates pretty close with me, because we're now also seeing that on elementary level.
Yeah.
Like recently, in the last couple weeks.
Yeah. And it's, it's hard to police, they're cheap to make, they're out there, they're laced with terrible stuff. And if we as a community can't take whatever stand we can take, I don't think we're doing enough.
Vaping's worse than, actually, worse than smoking.
The problem is, they don't know what's in them. I spoke to the county sheriff, and he said they had three kids that day fall over in the school because they took a hit off of vape, and...
So I will say, when I was working for the city, I prosecuted a case of a local guy here who was arrested with almost 5,000 vapes. Those were THC vapes. This is back at a time when THC was still classified as a Schedule I controlled substance. And the two biggest things that stood out to me when I prosecuted that case, first, everything that he had came from the internet from China. And the second was that the stuff that we were able to get analyzed by the Virginia Department of Forensic Science was incredibly dangerous. And if you look at the studies in cases like this, most of the really, really harmful stuff that comes in from abroad contains a vitamin called vitamin E. And it can cause catastrophic lung failure, it can cause incredible byproducts. And without going too far down this rabbit hole, I mean, the presence of fentanyl and vaporized fentanyl in vape cartridges is a huge problem. And, you know, I could talk to you for an hour about how dangerous fentanyl is, because part of what I do is I'm a drug prosecutor. But one concern I might have about your proposed zoning text amendment is, there, I can think of, there are several shops that, whatever we, however we feel about, lawfully peddle those products. In fact, I can think of one that I think is probably within 1,000 feet of the high school. And so one, now, I assume you're talking about a zoning text amendment to prohibit public use of vape cartridges?
No, no, no. That's, we don't put more stores. We can't build vape stores within 1,000 feet.
So you want, so, and that, the only, you know, how much do we want to regulate existing businesses, I think?
Yeah, in my dream world, they'd be grandfathered in.
Yeah, it would, yeah. How we would, if we were to propose to draft something, the thought would be, if you wanted to put a distance from schools, we could do that. It has been done in other localities. We've done a little bit of research looking into it. Yes, it would not cover existing businesses. So they were permitted under an existing zoning ordinance, so they would be kind of considered a grandfather use essentially. And Virginia does have standards for grandfathered uses. So if one of those businesses was to go out of business and convert into some other use, then it couldn't convert back
To it, babe.
To it. But, but if it, you know, is lawful and continues to operate, that would, that would be okay. So that's kind of how we would handle any moving forward if you propose some kind of distance. And then the other thing related to them, just from an aesthetic standpoint, you could consider, you know, kind of beefing up any regulations related to the lighting. I know several of them do have kind of like bright lighting and lighting that flashes.
To attract every 13-year-old through their doors because it looks like a carnival.
And that could be something that could also be, you know, covered under a zoning power related to kind of
Right.
a corridor and the aesthetic, for all businesses.
Right, right.
We would obviously be saying, all businesses could not put flashing lights or this or that.
Yeah.
So that's, those are some things we could...
And I think that would be okay. And signage is a done deal. They already do what they do. We can't do anything. I mean, signage will be enforced as it's enforced. But certainly making it look like a carnival, I think is, I don't know that we need any building, permanent building in Waynesboro to look like a carnival. So I'm okay with trying, figuring out a way to word it that would zone them out.
And we can, you know, we can do some mapping exercises. I think maybe we already have started to look into a little bit of, you know, what if you did it in 1,000, you know, feet
Right.
around a school, what would that look like? Does it leave essentially commercially-zoned properties still available? So that would be some of the analysis we'd be doing to make sure, you know, we were legally sound with, you know,
Right.
kind of enforcing our zoning power, but also not eliminating a use.
Is that something that you guys are interested in? Because I think we can direct staff, we can ask staff to...
Yeah, because I'm thinking four of them right here in Waynesboro, off the top of my head, those vape stores.
Yeah. And, I mean, by right is by right, but they don't have to be by right in the front of a school.
Exactly.
In my opinion. So if somebody wants to make a motion that we request staff to look into the possibility of both the aesthetic and the away-from-school possibility of a zoning text amendment, that'd be great.
I'll make that motion.
I can second that.
All right, everyone in favor of that?
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? No? You're a no?
Yeah, I'm a no.
Okay.
Okay, so we will plan to work on some drafts. I don't know exactly when it might be ready, but it's something we will start working on and bring back to you for you to consider at a public hearing.
So I have a question. How does that tie into the award of a business license? So you have an individual that wants to open up a business, and he applies for a business license?
So, so usually when someone applies for a business license, there, we're just kind of checking to make sure that they're compliant zoning-wise. So if this ordinance went into effect and it said, you know, a new vape store, and we're going to have to define it and be very specific about the things that we mean, because, you know, some might be sold in a regular convenience store, some are fully dedicated to, so we're going to be very careful with how we draft that definition. But if someone wanted to locate one, a new one, within 1,000 feet of a school, say, if we prohibited it, then it just wouldn't be allowed. But any, it wouldn't affect a business license as long as the property they found was compliant with zoning. It would be kind of the same way. They'd check and make sure they were compliant with the zoning ordinance, and then they could go get their business license. And like we're saying, you know, certainly currently operating stores that might... And like we're saying, you know, certainly currently operating stores that might, would, if we adopted an ordinance that would make them no longer compliant, if they were to try and exist today, they would still be able to operate because they would be under the old zoning ordinance. But it would have those kind of sunset clause-type things that if they were to convert to another use, they couldn't convert back. Or if the property was to sit, I think the law says if it was to sit vacant for two years, then they could not put, you know, another vape store in it.
I'm surprised they don't have to go through ATF and get a business license like a ABC store does.
Yeah, ABC, ABC regulates the sale of tobacco in the Commonwealth.
Oh.
And there are tremendous challenges associated
Oh.
with both enforcement and licensure. One of the challenges is, like with cigarettes, they all have to be tax-stamped. And I will confess, I am not familiar with the regime and whether or not the tax-stamp regime around the vape cartridges is the same. My understanding, and again, this is just my layman's understanding, is that because they generally do not contain tobacco, usually they contain aerosolized nicotine and other stuff, they do not, are not subject to the same sort of regulatory scheme.
Oh, okay.
Now, I may be corrected on that, I don't, I've not done any research on that issue, that's just my sort of cursory understanding.
Now taxing the bejibis out of vapes is something I would absolutely support.
Well, I would support that too. But, and I know that this is a much bigger problem and, and, but if one kid underage goes into those shops, it doesn't need to be within front of the school. I just feel like that, and everyone says there's nothing we can do, well, damn it, there's something we can, we can do. There's something we can do, so.
It'd be great if they couldn't go anywhere, though.
Yeah, just being one of those kids.
Two thousand yards away.
Right. Quite frankly.
Yeah, being one of those kids, like, and it's, it's not going to solve the problem. Like, kids talk, like you gotta go to Bob's 7-Eleven down by Mary Baldwin, you can't go to Tracy's, she's going to pull your ID. So that's, that's where I'm at. I'm going to have this discussion in good faith and, you know, we'll come up with something that, you know, we can act on. But in my mind, you know, if we're going to take a stand, we, we should be smart about it and like actually address the problem we're going to do and not just put a burden on the business because they're into nicotine or guns or liquor or boobs, you know, whatever it is.
Right.
You know, we don't want those things there, but you know, you got to do it in a way that solves the problem, not just like puts a burden on people.
Well, I haven't, I have to know that more kids go to shops that are close to school than go way out to the west, and kids who can't drive or whatever. But, and statistically, this has helped, this has at least started the wheel rolling to physically, I mean, and that's my understanding from the reading I've done. And it, as, as a Our hands are kind of tied, you know, I mean, we can only do what we can do.
Sure.
I can't, we can try to tax crap out of them, but here in our little town, we can say it doesn't need to be in front of a school.
All right, let's, let's have the discussion.
Okay. I know it's a much bigger problem and I would, I spend most of my day thinking about ways to solve it.
I see them doing it in the park, oh. Yeah, I have an office near the school and I have to pass it to get to our warehouse. I see them in the parking lot vaping all the time. They just go out for their lunch break and the clouds of smoke coming out, I don't know if it's nicotine or THC or whatever it is, but they're, they're there. I mean, there's not even like a parking lot attendant of some sort to, to manage that. Although, you know, I couldn't have gotten away with that in high school.
They don't all get away with it at the high school.
Okay, so we'll work on drafting something and bring it back to you.
Thank you, guys. Anything from anyone else? Okay, somebody want to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
On second.
Everyone in favor?